We begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I see the first thing we're going to do at 3:15 is supposed to go into a public hearing for the budget. So we'll open the public hearing for the budget.
Yeah, you have to make a motion.
I move that way. How did the?
Did he make a motion?
No, I got it ready. I move that we go into public hearing, FY '22, '23 UT budget.
Second motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion? Read this. So any comments about the budget? Other than, how did you handle it this year? Did you just add 2%, 3%?
No, I did not.
Okay.
No, I actually got a lot of description from the new UT road commissioner.
Good.
And also from the cemeteries and the Salem fire. I got, I think I've attached on the back of their actual budget that they sent me.
Yep.
And their actual breakdowns. So the UT budget, expense budget for FY '23.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
The UT FY '23 expense budget is $1,506,368. And that's an increase of $106,709 from FY '22. The biggest change was the road commissioner wanted me to add another $50,000 into paving reserve.
Right.
To do more paving next year.
Yep. So I moved it up to $150,000.
Yeah, and actually, yes, up to $150,000. And also on the reserves, Jim Hardy approached me and wanted to add in a maintenance account, reserve account for the towers in the UT to help out with the cost of those. So we added $2,000 for that.
Yep.
And actually, the ambulance actually went down, almost $1,000. So that was a good thing. And everything else, I think I kept the patrol, the UT deputy, I kept that the same as the previous year.
Okay.
I have a question. Maybe I could, I apologize for not having looked at it first. The answer would be in the budget. Did you add more for the CMP because of the new light at the Madrid?
Oh, yes, I believe I did.
Because that's going to be your monthly bill.
Yeah.
Yes, I increased it from FY '22 was $1,200, and I increased it to $1,500.
So then with the deductions, you end up with about just shy of $1.3 million?
Yes, with the revenues, estimated revenues.
And what was the tax assessment last time? Total, like when you were done?
Well, the state, I'm sorry, the state.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I don't have that.
It's like.
State says that.
Eight.
Yeah, .1 or something, right?
No, I think it's in the eight, eight, not even a. Basically, is this tax, is this 1.2 up or down?
Well.
1.3, whatever you want.
I haven't actually gotten the increase factor from the state yet.
Okay.
I've been waiting for that. I contacted them and they hadn't appropriated it yet, so I'm still waiting for that. But she said she doesn't think it's going to be any lot different than the previous year.
Really?
Yeah.
I have a question. Is there money in there for the UT deputy position for equipment? Or is it just for hours?
I think I see.
It's just for salary and benefits.
Okay, we had some other things we ran into this past year. We didn't have money to outfit the person. We had one take that out of our regular budget, so we weren't able to buy some of the things.
Oh, okay.
We needed to buy for the cruiser, an additional radar, another watch guard camera system.
Oh, okay.
UT deputy, you got one of these?
Yeah, you can do that.
A UT deputy is seen for $97,977. Want to look at that? And, let's see, we don't, and the vehicle is, I think that's just the $20,000.
That was the previous year. That was for the EMA.
Pickup, right? Yeah, okay.
We didn't add anything in for FY '23.
You didn't add anything in for the cruiser?
I did not. Do you want me to increase, to increase that amount? Or?
Do we have to buy one, or don't we have to buy one?
No, it's not, it would be to, to the equipment to.
We purchased a cruiser for the position.
Oh, wow. Is that the issue before?
I don't remember. But some of the things that we need to outfit the cruiser with, we didn't, there was no money budgeted for that.
Okay.
Like the, you know, the cage insert, the watch guard camera system, the radar. And those are things that, you know, obviously, that's an additional position, additional, everybody has to have that in a cruiser.
So that one needs to actually show county's budget for that, for that equipment?
We still don't have that for all of the, like, I don't have the watch guard camera system for that.
For that cruiser that that gentleman was using?
So those things have never been purchased?
Correct.
Oh.
So it needs to be put in. Okay, in this year's budget then?
Yeah. Do you have kind of like an estimated cost of what you think in there?
Grand would cover the watch guard and radar.
Okay, $8,000.
So the cage system isn't there?
The cage system, we, those, yeah, we found this place together.
Yeah, okay. How did you handle the waste disposal for the towns?
We actually sent out, we sent out notifications to them, and they actually sent us back what their budgets would be. We never heard back from the town arrangement for the waste disposal and the fire, so we kept it the same as last year.
Good.
We did that previously in FY '22 also.
Good.
They asked for an extension. I gave them a 15-day extension, and I still don't.
Still didn't respond?
No.
Okay.
So do you want to increase, do you want to add?
Yeah, I think.
$8,000 into, I can actually change the title on there where it says EMA E911 UT. Like, I can put UT cruiser.
UT cruiser, yeah, good, just add another.
Yeah, it would be good.
Yeah.
Eight, $10,000.
$8,000. Okay, so let me go add this total up, so you have a total to vote on.
Okay.
There's no input up here.
No public comment?
Could I ask a question, please?
Yes.
This is Sven Fowler. I talked to Vicki this week, just trying to get an understanding, better understanding of the budget. And under paving, where you've increased the budget from $100,000 to $150,000.
Yes.
You have $624,000 actually in that account. And I'm wondering, is there a plan to expend that money and a timeframe attached to it? Do you have an overall roads plan that addresses that?
The road commissioner has the list of the roads he wants to pave. We had the money in the paving. And why he didn't do it this year is because of the weather. The rain, he said he didn't want his roads wet. When they pave them, he wants them dry, and then it come cold weather. So that's why it's holdover for next year.
Okay, Sven?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, it's just a question about, is, I don't think we had that information yet, but with the passing of the infrastructure bill out of Washington, right? Is there going to be any money for the county roads or anything like that? Or do we know, does anybody have any idea?
On the person, I don't know. I'm not sure.
I can't remember how much the state got, I want to say it was a total billion or something.
Yeah.
Well, I just wondered if that's a situation where you might have to match up the two of those?
Yeah. I'll bet we do have.
I don't know if we could ask Sue to look into that, even though. Yeah, we can ask her.
Yeah. We need to have a meeting when she gets back. Yeah, we do. So we'll set that up when she gets back. Any other questions? Anybody else?
I just want other questions, if I could. Under E911 and the reserves, there's $55,461 before you appropriate the $10,000. And I know that Vick, he told me what that was for, but I didn't, I can't read my own writing. Could you revisit that?
What does that line, what is that line?
Reserves, E911?
E911.
Oh, E9, I'm sorry. Yeah, what was he saying?
Is he, are you looking at the line with the zeros in it, Sven?
No, I was reading the reserves line.
Okay. Paving reserve at $150,000.
What did you? No, that's what he said, it's six or something. I don't think we've got the same page that he's got.
No, no.
We're just showing what they put in addition. I don't have what's in there totally in front of me anyway.
Well, Vicki can probably tell then.
Anyway, she might know a lot of that stuff.
She had talked to him about it. Sven has a question for you, too.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sven, ask that question again.
Yeah, Vicki, I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing. We had a conversation about this, about the reserves, E911.
Yes.
They're asking $10,000 this year, and I think my writing says $55,461 is currently in that account.
That's correct.
And I wasn't sure of the purpose of the E911 reserve account.
Right, I'm not sure what the full purpose of it is, but I know some of it is to purchase road signs, road posts, uh, the signposts, things like that. So I'm not sure if there's anything else that is in that amount that should be used.
Is it like a capital reserve?
It's like a capital reserve, yeah.
We haven't done that yet. We haven't put up signs, Franklin County, yet. Have we?
She does it all the time.
She does it all the time?
No, there haven't been signs when you cross over, say, into Phillips from unorganized territory.
Oh, no.
There haven't been any.
No.
You know, we go by the pine tree, the big one, and sooner or later, that's going to be cut or fall. So we need signs. And I talked to Mike Bond about that, and I was just curious, is it going to happen?
Well, now we know where the money is.
What type of signs are you talking about?
You have Andrew Phillips and, well, it's a town lawn, that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought there was some lines up there.
I don't know, but I know it's used for all addressing signs, things like that.
And the posts, the posts that has like Phillips on one side and Salem on the other side, you know?
There aren't signs like that off the Reed Mills Road coming down the flats.
Okay.
There aren't signs of any kind.
Oh, I thought, oh, that's what you're talking about, those signs, yeah.
Yeah, so those need to be there because they were making complaints. But we brought this up this past winter. They were making complaints about the road condition when it actually was in Phillips.
Yeah.
Not in the county.
Oh, I see.
So without the signs there, they don't know about the big pine tree.
So is that Route 4?
No, no, it's not, no. It's out off the middle. You know where Fox out there, they have to go across the Sandy River Bridge.
Does that come under the E911 call?
Would it?
Or would it come under the maintenance of highways? You know, that's a question, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would be, well, I think Mike has put road signs, you know, the, because somebody's doing it for her. And I think if Mike is, I know Jerry Youth had to do that for her. She gets the signs, I guess, and a post somewhere.
Yeah, she orders them.
Yeah, and then, and then has Jerry pull them up. Well, I think Mike is the one who could be putting them up.
Fine, I was just wondering if somebody had been doing that.
Yeah, but we got to find out if they go for, is it a maintenance on the highway?
Which budget?
Or is it, or is it E911?
I would think if there was a road sign saying Phillips, this way, Madison, this way, Salem, that way, I would think that would become the road.
I would think it'd come into the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it the E911?
Yeah.
I'm just curious if we've been doing that, because I haven't checked them in a month.
Can I make a clarification to your conversation?
Sign in.
The E911 road addressing signs, is that what you're referring to?
That reserve account.
Okay, that comes out of the E911 account. Those so-called road signs, street signs.
Yeah, right.
And over the years, Jerry Ames and myself have been doing it, and lately, I've been doing it.
Oh, you've been doing it? Okay. Is there enough, do you need an extra $10,000 then?
Well, I can tell you that with people moving into anywhere and everywhere, we've had to add roads to places you wouldn't think there's roads over the past year.
Yeah.
I always cut myself short, and plus, everybody, when they come up for vacations, steals them, so.
Yeah, and sharing is like the same.
Yeah, we have a lot of our signs that we, the same names that we order a lot.
Yeah, but I've never seen signs like I'm talking about.
See, what he's talking about, Tim, is when you come out of Salem going into Phillips, the sign saying you're going into Phillips, and Salem on one side, Phillips on the other. That's what he's talking about.
Town law.
The only ones I've seen, Terry, is some of the ones that the towns put up themselves. You know, like Welcome to Wilton or.
You also see the, like, the, sometimes the ones that are straight up and down. The posts that say Washington on township or whatever, on the other side.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
But that seems like that would be a state issue.
Those are DOT ones when you get into the townships.
That's what I figured.
Especially once you hit north and use this.
Well, say, even up to Mount Blue. You go up the road, what's the number there?
156?
No, no. Out of Weld.
42.
Turn right there. Turn left, then turn right.
Yeah.
You go up into, to get into Byrd.
Yeah.
You go by the Appalachian Trail and all those trail markers. There's one there. And that's what prompted me to say this. How come we don't have those everywhere?
There is one there.
Yep.
So that's probably something we need to write the state about there.
Yeah, I can talk to Mike or Tim, I can talk to Mike or.
Yeah, Mike and I, we had this conversation months ago. But I was just wondering if anything was done about it.
I haven't heard.
I was following up.
Correct.
Sorry, you interrupted, I just wanted.
No, no, you didn't. No, I wanted you to, no, absolutely, do that.
I'm glad you did. Yeah, I didn't know you enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right.
Okay, so with the new addition of, I'm going to do it, hold on.
You had 1,506, 368.
And how much we had in total?
Yeah, so the current revised budget is going to be 1,504,768. And the reason that it's more than the $8,000 is because when the, the higher the budget go, the higher the administration fee goes up.
So we should spend less money, we get less administration?
Right.
What would be the difference there? That's cute, I like that.
That's the way that four years.
So you have a mark on a number that you go by.
Yeah.
So the higher we go in one, we go higher.
So that's got to put a little over 1.3, right?
What's that?
With the deductions, that puts a little over 1.3 total?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and so the difference between the FY '23 budget and FY '22 is now $115,109. That's the increase.
115.
$1,109.
I figure it's have to be, well, it's roughly our size, right? Just thinking, percentage, you know?
Yeah, well, it's actually a little less than 15, maybe.
Yeah.
115, so it's, I don't know, eight, maybe seven.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions in the public?
I make a motion. I make a motion we appropriate.
Close the.
Approve.
Or close the public hearing?
Approve, the UT budget.
Yeah. We got to close.
Oh.
We'll close the meeting first.
Oh, oh, we have to close the meeting.
Yeah, no one has anything else? We'll close the public hearing on the UT budget? Now, go ahead with your motion, Paul.
I make a motion we appropriate for the UT budget for 2022, 2023, for $1,514,768.
Second motion. Moved in second, that we appropriate $1,514,768. Any further discussion on that motion? Saying none, all those in favor of that motion, so signify.
3, 2, 1. Over here, you got $8,000 and a half.
So I'll have two, I'll have two pages for you to sign on your approval on the budget. There's the first one, and I'll go down the second.
I do 10.
You keep any one?
And there's the other page.
That's on top here, is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Without the sign.
Yeah.
He staggered them for you, too, you know, Tim.
I don't want to pay any blame for it.
So I think we're good on the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll move to item number two. We're supposed to go into executive session. So Jim?
Yeah.
Is Peter there?
Yeah, I have to remove, you're going to go into it?
Okay, well, I need a motion first.
I move that we go into executive session, one MRSA 456, a personal matter, consultation with legal counsel.
Matter, personal matter, okay. Second motion.
Second, moved in second, we go into executive session. All those in favor, so signify. A little bit late. Yeah, 3:36 or 37. So we're done with the executive session, we'll move to clerk's report.
You should have the minutes for November 16th and November 17th for approvals and signatures.
I move that we approve and sign those with that report.
Second motion.
Moved in second, we sign the reports from previous meetings. All those in favor? Okay, we'll move to the treasures report.
Oh, sorry, I thought I gave it all you.
That's you, Ben.
See, all I have, all I have to report are, is county warrants. There are actually three payroll warrants from last week. There's one county warrant, a UT warrant, and a TIF warrant. And then we also, in association with Main Purse and the empowerment retirement, we've made three electronic funds transfers.
Move that we accept the treasures report.
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion? So we're still making money on the.
Thank you.
On the COVID funds, right?
We're making money on everything.
Everything in the bank.
Everything in the bank. And we tried to keep them, make a mess. Yeah, if it's a mess, just blame Lance.
Yeah, I'll take that. All right. My wife's gift, I might as well keep that all down.
Item number three, DA office rental agreement with Craig Jordan.
Yeah.
He's here.
Yeah.
So what we would, so the rental agreement was, was it five years? Is that what it was?
Yeah, it was just a, it was a third phase of the first two.
Yeah. So what we were talking about a little bit, we don't know about what may or may not happen, but there has been some talk about the sheriff's department, right? And if we were to do some building up there, might we not, you know, build it live? We don't know. But what we were wondering is, could we get an agreement that was, you know, I mean, well, we, obviously, you guys, you weren't going, that you wouldn't maybe want a five-year agreement if that's what it was. At the same time, I can understand your issue that you want, you know, the agreement to be as long as possible. So is there any way we could maybe work something out here?
I really, because of different things that have had going on recently, I hadn't really thought much about it. I did a little bit that day, but after that, I kind of let it go.
Okay.
I guess I would express one thing to you guys, just as a point of interest. On the building where the DA currently is.
Yeah.
Is handy to everything.
Yeah.
Once, if, once and if, that you were to move, and even if, whether I own this building or not.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing this out there.
Yeah, no.
Whether, you know, would be that every time that the DA has to go to court, he's going to get in his vehicle, and they've got to come down here if they need for anything. So not only are you putting them on the road for one thing, which is, you know, a liability, but anytime that you had inclement weather or situations like that, that's also a liability. And, you know, I guess I would throw this out there for you to think about.
Yeah.
In the fact that I think the building could do more than be a DA's office. Because we don't know where this whole thing's going anyway. Because you get COVID and everybody goes home. You know, I mean, people working out of their house, so you don't need as much space. But the sheriff's department needs more space where they are right now. You know, so they're, they're already cramped. This building that I got up the street, it's, it's an older property. Does it have wet-based paint? Unquestionably, you know, it was part of the Underground Railroad, this building was, you know? I think, you know, long term possibly, and, and I'm, don't get me wrong here, I'm not trying to load this thing or anything. I just think that maybe it could be beneficial for the county to own that property and maximize the space in it. Because, I mean, you're using a quarter of the space in the building. And it has parking. It has a parking lot there that, you know, it is, you can almost never go by, but what, you see a police car in there or something, somebody's in there checking with something, or, and it's handy and everything, and it's, you know? I just wanted to throw that out there. And I guess.
If you don't want to ask him, do you got any idea what you'd want for it?
Well, I didn't, I didn't go to that.
Okay.
I didn't even, I didn't even go there.
Okay, I just want.
I mean, in the event that it was, something like that did come about, you know, you'd do the prudent thing, just get somebody to come in and present and try to be fair.
I mean, I don't know if you, if you're looking at rebuilding something, maybe that money allows you to, you know, basically restore or whatever, I don't know.
You know, I'm just, I just.
I think personally, as a commissioner.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for the work that you put in to the DA's office to make it secure. And so it's, everybody can't hear what's going on. I know you put a lot of money into that, those offices. And you didn't make it in your rent, I know that. And I appreciate your rent, that you have been trogenous. I think it's very, very fair. And I guess, wouldn't they want to, you know, I think you've got to go up on your rent because the taxes are going up, the insurance is going up, and everything else is going up. And you're not asking a whole lot to go up on your taxes and on your rent. And I agree with you.
This, this year, what I asked for an increase in rent wouldn't even pay, wouldn't even pay the difference in a way.
Yeah.
But the thing is, I own the building, right? Let's say, and I think the Kaiser people use me well on my insurance.
Yeah.
Because it's in a package, so, um, and, and I think it's beneficial to both of us.
Yeah, I do too.
I, so really do.
My, my issue, once again, was not, wasn't with the rent, wasn't with what you're charging, it's the idea that, you know, if, so.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
We've come into COVID money, right?
Right.
And this COVID money may or may not, which we don't know yet, allow some infrastructure issues. So you, as you well know, the sheriff, the sheriff's building needs to be fixed. So the thought is, and we just put the, um, um, a new septic system in up there, and we oversized it in case we have to make, in case, so we would have the ability to make change. So from our perspective, at least from, I should say, not from my perspective, right? If you have a chance, whether it was to maybe buy yours or whatever, and you get, you able to use this money to some change, so in the long term, you know, you have this taken care of, and you either own the property versus habitual rent. Not anything personal about what you're charging, it's just like, could you use that money for that? And if we had a five-year lease, right, which we entered into, then if we made a change in a couple of years, you know, that would be, you know, problematic for us. I can still understand it with you. I guess my thought would be, and like I said, we don't know, maybe we'd look at this and go, it's just way too much, we can't go that direction, whatever. But, um, maybe rather than getting rid of the five years, wouldn't there be a way we could write up a, a contract that would say, in lieu of a decision, we would pay you X figure to get out of it, so to speak? And if we did, we did, and if we didn't, we didn't.
Well, I think, I think everything has to be considered and thought about.
Yeah.
My mind is a little bit clearer right now, do, you know, just some issues we had.
Yeah.
That I had in recent, um, some, some of our animals.
Oh, gee, sorry.
But, um,
you know, I got one more thing I want to say. I was on board, been here for a few years, when we was gonna buy, thinking about buying a car in over here.
Right.
Then they went and got out the shoe shop because we was out of room here. Well, Greg Jordan stepped up and got us out of the whole mess. Opened up his place up there and put the DA's office in there, so, because it'd be closer to the courts and the courthouse here. And I'll never, never forget that, what he done, bail us out of that mess that we were in. And it was, I'll tell you, because there were several places. And here we are today, he's still here, and.
It was a hypothetical question, it'll answer that.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand.
We don't know, it's just, you know, is there a way to make, in case we did look at something like that? And it might be, like I said, it might be something that, well, maybe we, if, you know, if we get talking, we might go, well, maybe it's cheaper to buy this, maybe that allows us to do that, and maybe fix it up, or you're only using a third. Because if we bought it, that takes care of that five-year thing, but if we went another direction, it doesn't, and that's the whole issue about, it's not, it's not that I don't think you're doing a good job, it's not, I don't think the money's wrong. It's just, what do you do about that, that's all.
Yeah.
If you had, happened to go another way. And maybe, you know, maybe we pay up some kind of penalty that's not full, the full five, and maybe we would or wouldn't, but maybe we haven't written up like that or something, so. It's just something to think about, I don't know how to do it.
Yes, we still got, we still got a little bit of time.
Oh, yeah, we got a lot of it, isn't it?
But we. Why don't we? I will, I'll talk it over with the other half of my arrangements.
Okay.
And, uh, because, um, just because, and, and, you know, you have another meeting, what, the twenty-first?
Yeah.
We'll just take a few minutes on that.
When, when is the, when are we up with your contract?
The end of the month.
End of the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and maybe if you want, we could extend it a bit till we get it figured out.
Yeah, we could just do, we could, you know, I'll, let me think about it.
Yeah, once again, you know.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be unreasonable with it.
No, neither do I, you know.
Uh, I know, I know Andy likes it there.
Yeah.
I mean, he, of course, he's not there as much, obviously, than he was, I think.
No, there is absolutely certain advantages of that.
Yeah.
And then there might also be certain advantages in this other direction, so it's about weighing it out, you know? What's allowed, what's not allowed, what's possible, what's not possible, that kind of thing.
Can, can I ask how many units is in the building?
Oh, gosh, I, I don't even know, I don't count them. I don't, I don't, I can't even tell you how many apartments I own, I don't own a lot of them, I own some, but I, you know, I don't. You know, there's, there's some individual rooms up front, I've got, uh, gosh, I can't. I've got a counselor up there in the front, I've got one, one apartment upstairs. And, uh, I don't know, I think, I think you're using about a quarter of the space or less.
Oh, wow.
In, you know, right now.
I thought you used more than that.
A quarter?
Because they've got a room upstairs.
They, you have a room upstairs now. But see, and you, you start in the L and go to the back.
Yeah.
You know, they, they don't even have the whole L, you got the whole front too, you know, the whole front, the front part of the building is bigger than the back.
I don't know, I don't know either.
Yeah.
If we hypothetically, let's say that we could say this is an infrastructure improvement, we want to buy or whatever, right? I'm just winging this out there a little bit. Can the county actually have revenue sources of renters? It seems, it seems like you're pushing the envelope, but.
Yeah, you're, you're talking a big liability.
Yeah, that's true, okay, right about that, yeah, I'm talking about that, but, it's like, well.
Okay, we'll review this in a couple of weeks, and thank you, Greg.
Sure, I'll just, we'll think about it.
Yeah, right.
See what we can do.
That's all we're doing.
Hang on, we're having in.
All right, thank you.
We're just brainstorming. Okay, Tim Hardy, mutual aid agreement.
Good morning, Tim, you're up.
Good afternoon. I think I gave you folks a copy of this mutual aid agreement amongst the county emergency management agencies. This is not anything new, this is something that's been in place, it's just being updated, and so just asking for your review and your signatures, so we can continue our relationships.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept that proposal that you give us, and I've had a chance to study it.
Okay, second motion.
And I put that into a motion.
You should bring, you sign it right there, and then hit it in the backer and havel.
Do I get a second on my motion?
I think, I think you did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion? So vote, so we'll sign it, and then he can be on his way.
There he is, God gave his, right, that's gonna come up next.
December seventh, yesterday, December seventh, a date which will live in infamy. What? Ah, Yamamoto, I'll go there.
Yeah, yeah, he made a big mistake, he wasn't dragging.
Yeah, they made a big mistake in the back, they'd crack his code and, uh, figured out how to get P thirty-eights in position to make it look like they just ran into him while he was over the Solomon Islands. There was a big question on whether they should do it, because, you know.
Thank you, Tim.
How's your progress?
There you go.
Good evening.
Have a good day.
Just happen to show up.
Item number five, David Bradcliffe.
Hey.
Stone Garden donation of a canine.
Three things for you today, um, once, you want to copy that?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so, once again, Stone Garden.
Thank you.
I applied for some grant money, um, that was approved this last year. The, so Trunark is a machine that uses a laser beam to, that goes in and analyzes substances. So obviously with the increase of the narcotic problems we're having here, not only in Maine, but across the country, the toxicity of some of the stuff that we're seeing, specifically the fentanyl, you guys have all read, seen the news, that literally that one little puff of fentanyl powder could kill you. Um, so the Trunark allows the examination of those without ever opening the packages. So if it's in a plastic bag, you can actually do it right through, right through the plastic bag, you don't have to open it up. So tried and true, uh, very, very good product. M D E A, Maine Drug Enforcement, uh, has several of these, several of the agencies have these. I applied through Stone Garden to pay for one. What I budgeted for was a little shy of what came in because prices increased like on everything this year. So I've got twenty-nine-five, twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in approved grant funding. The total for the Trunark plus the, uh, the solution, so one of the things is if you, with, if you do a, a powder examination and it comes back inconclusive, you can actually take a little bit of that powder out, put it in a, in a liquid solution, uh, which then kind of dissolves, and then allows the, the laser to better analyze in the solution um, what, you know, what the compounds are in there. So there's, uh, um, the five hundred seventy dollars is for a hundred of those solution vials, which will allow us to test a hundred different, or a hundred times, um, to do individual tests for something that can't be.
Is this a mobile?
Yes, yeah, it's literally, it's, it's about twice the size of your little speaker thing here.
Okay.
The, uh, so anyway, so I, there's part of the Stone Garden funding, we get reimbursed for mileage. Uh, so it's kind of hoping that we could take, um, thirteen hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents out of the mileage reimbursement to offset the cost, um, of this, so this doesn't cost us anything outside of Stone Garden, so that the, we're not trying to find, scrounge around in our county budget to pay for this.
So you need to take out thirteen, that number at the bottom, out?
Out of the, the Stone Garden reimbursement, um, so just basically that'd be offset by mileage reimbursement that we get. So there's, that accumulates in there.
Okay. So you've got twenty-nine thousand five hundred, fine, you want to take out thirteen hundred?
Yep, but I, but I need, but I need permission to, to spend the whole, just under thirty-one thousand to buy the unit. The twenty-nine, the twenty-nine-five will be re, will be reimbursed, um, so all, all the others. Like all the other stuff that we do with Stone Garden.
So we're gonna give you permission to spend thirty-one thousand, and you're gonna get twenty-nine hundred of it reimbursed.
Yes.
So the total, we're actually putting it thirteen.
And that, and that's coming out of Stone Garden money that's already been reimbursed, other, other stuff.
I don't want to give you permission to do it.
We need that mallet up there, next time my phone rings, I'll take that.
Hit me tight the head.
Oh, the phone.
I can't tell it off.
Yeah, I move that we allow Detective Bradcliffe to do this.
Second motion.
Okay, moved in second, any further discussion? Say none, all in favor of that motion, so signify. Please do so.
Okay.
Good.
Number two, um, the chief and the sheriff agreed the other day to put our third canine position back in play. Uh, we've been a couple of years with just the two of us. Uh, one of our dogs is probably going to retire within the next year or so, he's eight years old now. Uh, so in the next year or two, he's gonna be put in retirement. So we'll need to bring in another canine now to get them started on, on training. Once again, funding is always an issue. Von Woden Kennels, um, has offered to donate, um, a three-year-old female German shepherd that's already started um, on narcotic detection. Should be a really, really good dog, so.
So what do these canine job interviews look like, anyway?
Well, you want to apply? So, yeah, so, so we, we have the post ed in-house and.
What happens to the one you get rid of when he retires?
Usually the hand, little, well, I, I, in the entire state, I've only known a handful of guys that have, have, their dog is retired, and they've gone like, yes, this is their dog now, not mine. Uh, most everybody takes a dog home, because it becomes part of the family.
Yeah, okay, got you, yeah. So, and so I assume the new dog, about what, what does one of these dogs cost?
Um, depending on what you're, what you're, where you're going, anywhere between six and twelve thousand dollars.
I'm in the wrong building.
There's a lot of work that goes along.
Things haven't just gone into the drugs, they've gone into the dogs.
Yeah, yeah, uh, but there's, there's a lot of risk too for.
No, I don't, I. Sell a dog, I understand, it's a, it's a highly trained animal, I don't know. I was talking to a guy the other day, this one woman has a, like a, basically it's a dog that tracks wounded deer.
Mm-hmm.
And she's like, from, like, November into December, six weeks, she's like, four or five bookings a day, and two hundred dollars a pop. Like, where do I get one of them dogs?
If you sell a dead bug dog, you make some big money there.
Yeah, get one of them on a drugstore, and that'll be all set. But he's like, he's like, neighbor, I was like, like.
Raka.
Raka, R A C K E.
So what do you need from us?
A bone or something? Need permission to accept the donation for the dog?
Okay.
Because it's, because it's a donation.
I move that we accept the donation for the new dog.
Second motion.
Do we know the new dog's name?
Raka.
Oh, what's the old dog's name, one of them?
Um, Bane.
Should we get him like a bone or something with the name on it?
Probably get him a plaque when he retires.
All right.
That's a year or so down the road, at least a year, hopefully.
Should be something for him, though, come on.
Who'll be handling that dog, Greg?
Don't know, we're gonna, we're doing, we posted the position for the canine position last week.
Oh, I see.
So we'll be doing interviews, that has to be posted for ten days, so that ends, I think, Monday? Next Monday, I think, is the ten days. Um, so then we'll take whoever applied, and we'll do an interview process.
There was somebody that had a dog in the way for a while, did they? I did, but, did we have three at one time?
We did. Let's not get into that.
I thought we had two.
Yeah.
And next time, try, try, try to print this off in something other, two point.
I, I literally, I tried six times to print this thing, and if I printed it any bigger, it wouldn't come up on the page. I don't, I, I'm pretty good with computer stuff, I could not get that figured out. That's why I brought my glasses in case you asked for anything.
Yeah, they have one of the glasses, I was trying to read it. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the dog? All those in favor, so signify.
And I've got one more thing. So cleaning out, looking for, just I forget the, the Conex boxes out there behind the sheriff's office with all of our old stuff in it. I went through there a couple of months ago, and I've got two or three big boxes of old strobe lights, flashlights that are defunct, stuff that we will never, ever, ever use again. Um, there's a couple of really old watch guard camera systems that nobody wants because the technology.
So what's the value?
Scrap, if that, trash.
It's like the metal that we just.
That will probably work more than the stuff I get, so, because that's, actually has the scrap down it.
It's like an eight trash paper.
Yes, yeah, pretty much. So I've got, I've got two, three boxes of just stuff that nobody wants, it's, it's just, it's, you know, vehicle-specific stuff that, for Crown Vics, didn't even make the Crown Vic anymore, I just like to be able to dispose of that, just to get it out of the way. So, but that's county property.
Get after me, I'm going for you, yeah.
What's that?
You get my permission.
Yeah, throw it out. Do we need to make a motion for that?
It's county property, I think you do.
County property.
I move that we let it, do with it, what do you want?
Dispose of the material.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that?
Make sure you stand there, make sure and get your.
All those in favor of that motion?
We've, we've got a big dumpster.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Dave.
See you later.
New public parking hours, item number six.
Basically, it's just an announcement, um, to the public that we have posted new parking hours.
Yeah.
Um, seven A M. right to five P M. Yeah, so it's just kind of an announcement.
Do we need any action on that?
I don't know that we're putting the bump, it's just more FYI to the public.
So they can flow, right?
Well, let's try and get out. Uh, meetings last beyond four o'clock in the U.S.A. And they blocked me in, I can't get out.
Sometimes we come in in the morning, we struggle to get our spots in the morning.
I don't want to get a ticket, parking out on a main street.
I get, I got my own handicap.
I see that.
I hope I don't get a ticket, my wife won't let me have her car again.
Item number seven, four fifty-seven plan documents for signature.
So we have a formal plan document, because we talked about adding the loan provision, right? Well, Power has, um, given us a new plan document with that built into it, and so Terry, you need to sign, and we need to have a witness to that plan document that go in place.
Oh, do I need to read this?
It's been run by the legal team twice.
Okay.
Uh, because they had some suggestions, um, the first time around, and so we reached back out to four fifty-seven to empower, and they made some edits to it, they sent it back to us, and they sent it back to the lawyer, and now we're final.
Does anybody want to read this before we sign?
Forty-two pages.
Want to read it before?
Yours, your signature.
Okay.
If, if you could make a motion for the.
I move that we accept and sign this plan document.
Second motion.
All in favor of that motion?
I want me to witness the word. Yeah, can I witness it? Or does it have to be somebody else? Okay, good.
Yeah, she can.
I can fill the rest of it in.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item number eight, workplace records policy approval. I've read that. I think we ought to hold on to that because of the issues we're having. Okay.
What was that?
I, I think we ought to hold on to the records. I read the policy and I've got it worded and you're gonna purge some of the files.
I think. No, no, I'm not going to, cause we can't purge files until as far as termination or anything like that.
Till they leave.
A long, long time. It's like sixty years after they leave.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna.
Um, I don't think there's gonna be a matter of tossing anything when we consolidate. This is more so that we can bring the records into one location. But yes, it is built into the policy that will follow the state guidelines as far as, um, government.
You answered my question. Well, my fear, I didn't want you to dispose of anything yet. Okay.
No, I mean, we're gonna follow those guidelines anyway.
Do we need a motion in?
Yes.
I move that we, uh, accept the, uh, workplace policy proposal. Record below.
Second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion, so signify. Three to zero. Item number nine, ARPA proposal application.
So Sue, I think, sent you all an email, but it's also in your packet that I gave you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what she sent you as far as what she wanted out of me. I think she just wanted your approval to implement.
Did she put this together?
Yes, she did. The application and the guidelines of the process.
Because of the nonprofit organizations who have requests that meets the requirements, that's pretty small because.
I didn't actually read through it myself, so.
I, I didn't like that line because we've been trying to get the nonprofits to find other ways of funding.
Yeah, there should be two. So if these, both of these are what you're looking for, uh, you might have.
So this is, uh.
So you need a minute to come through it?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I would think the other gentleman should peruse it and talk to Sue when she comes back and have her explain it. Yeah. She, I know I've met, I know Clyde's talked to her because she gave her. Yeah.
Okay, so you won't hold off until you meet with her and, okay.
Yeah, I think that would work better. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Item number ten, COVID stipend.
That's off the agenda now. Just, um, it was like a last minute, never mind. So we're gonna skip back.
All right. So what was about? Before we never minded it.
Um, in regards to COVID stipend, there was a little upset and with current employees that hadn't fit that criteria that you guys agreed upon, the March twenty twenty to the June thirtieth. Um, but they decided to remove it from there because, um, out of the, the employees that were on that list that weren't under that criteria, um, there was only one that this person was coming forth about. So, and I can't really say too.
Okay, gotcha. It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what it was. Yeah, yeah. I understand. All right. Are we done with new business?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to old business. And I see we have visitors from Montlu Garden Club. And tree removal estimates.
We actually have more estimates than that today. I have a nice package for you that on the front, uh, we made a budgetary estimate of what we're talking about. Uh, let me try.
Thank you.
Christmasy too.
Read for go. Um, the package I gave you has the estimate on the front. Inside are copies of quotes. The, um, tabs, the first yellow tab has a, um, fact sheet on the Norway pound. We're getting some complaints that we shouldn't take down the tree.
Okay.
Um, so that's kind of up in the air at this point.
I thought you had, you had gone through the neighborhood and everybody.
The neighborhood is totally in favor of it. There was someone from the public and someone from the garden club that, um.
Was it Paul's doing it?
Don't, they don't want it done. And my response to them is I think it should be up to, I'm hoping there'll be a committee to decide what to do on that plot. Um, the red tab has just a list of a lot of different things that could be done on that site. Because on my estimate on the front page, I put a range. So that range would be determined depending on the things that they would decide.
Okay.
Um, the green tab, on Saturday, Garden Club had a booth at the craft fair. And we had a display of all the soldiers that had died and we had history of the arch and, uh, some of the things we were talking about that we considered good improvements.
Yeah.
And we got a lot, we asked people to fill out cards with their suggestions or opinions and I made copies of the cards at the back of the picture for you. And then the last thing that's in the package is, I don't have a copy one. That blue page is a list of all the people that we've talked to that say that this is a great idea and they think that it would be an appropriate use of public funds.
So you have people that are supporting. You don't have a list of people that aren't supporting?
There's two. I can give you their names, but I.
Might be able to really help you there.
Say that again.
Governor Janet Mills.
Mm-hmm. Well, you spoke with her.
Yeah, she's, she's.
And she had a recommendation for you.
She shot me down.
So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
I, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
So on this page, there are people that, that are supportive, are willing to donate some time to, towards the project?
Uh, some would be. The, um, you know, like what I'm hoping is that we can get funding and go, that we find some stakeholders and people to form a committee to talk about, you know, what it could be and what can be done. Um, I put on there a, a project manager. I had no clue what to put on price for that. Uh, it seems like it would be a short term.
Hmm.
I don't know what to call it. Jaw, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this, this couldn't be the COVID fund because it's one and done kind of with the COVID.
It's supposed to go from the silver, right?
Well, we can take a look at it. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm gonna, I wanna read this.
Oh, yeah.
For sure. Well, thank you very much for your information. You want to look at the numbers.
Is there anything else you need from us?
I don't think so. I think this is. No, I'm on set.
One other thing that was interesting in some of the history of it. Um, uh, the town in all of Franklin County did a fundraising event. And from December seventh in nineteen twenty-three to June something, June sixth or something in nineteen twenty-four, they raised eight hundred and sixty dollars to buy the lot and, um, grade and put the curving in.
Hecka lot of money back, yeah. Hecka lot of money back.
It was a lot of money because the dollar had a value of sixteen dollars today.
Yeah, now you all want.
But Libby has a list of everyone who contributed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Really?
Yeah.
Geez, if only they had known.
And how much.
That it wasn't the war to end all war.
And what a disappointment they would, but they would still want to keep supporting and remembering everyone that's come since as well.
Particularly the gentleman that gave up his house, his home and everything, just to build that. And that's pretty amazing. Yeah. I think, but thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Is, uh, any other old business? We got old people here.
Oh, we're about to leave.
No, no, no.
I'm the oldest.
You're all, you're just youngsters.
Thank you.
Prepared to glide.
Thanks.
Good luck, Ash. We don't see you again. Enjoy your retirement.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. You have a little aside.
Oh, thank you.
You have a little aside.
Thank you very much. I, I expect if we move into miscellaneous that we have some of that.
I do not.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Why do you say that? I'm all excited.
What was it?
Uh, the time clock.
Time clock plus.
Yes, and a couple of things that were kind of, they came up today. So, um.
That's too new.
One is the time clock, time clock plus. So we did a demo today and gave the department heads an opportunity to participate and really see the ins and outs of the software, how it's gonna work for us or not work for us.
Yeah.
Um, my question is, because they're working out two quotes and so, and one of them, um, they have a twenty percent discount right now, a deal on the hard clocks. So if we act on it, depending on how fast we want to act on it, we might be able to take advantage of this, which could save us about six hundred dollars off of, um, the price of this.
Now you're, some of this deals with the fact that people would have to do this online when they're home, right?
They have the ability to.
Do it when they're home.
Lock in and out on the web, on their phone or.
Exactly.
Yes. But you can set it up however you want to as far as the employer.
So what I want to know is if this at all affects the Zoom potential about working in, can you run this by Sue?
What do you, say that again.
Using the COVID. Wait, wait, maybe you could use COVID, my core.
Well, that's what, where I was getting with this question was, cause I, and you guys are gonna meet with her, right? I'm assuming when she comes back next week.
Correct.
And my plan is to bring this back to you the next meeting on twenty first.
Okay.
So you will have a little bit of time. It is time sensitive if they're gonna give us that potential discount.
But could you also kind of.
So why don't you just start thinking about that?
Just, you can use my name. Could you send this to Sue and say Commissioner Harbaugh was wondering because this is potentially related to people working at home, if there's any way that we could cover this with COVID. So at least they'll get her thinking about it before she shows up.
We can. But then when you guys meet, whether you can have further discussion.
But I mean, the, the preps are mine a little bit.
Sure, sure.
Do you know, do you know when she's coming back?
Next week she'll be back. Tuesday, on Tuesday. She's gonna be here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, full day.
Who that, who is?
Yes, yeah.
So we ought to set up a time to meet with her.
Yeah.
You know.
For sure, yeah.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I'll set out something with all of you on it and we're gonna coordinate some weekend.
All right.
So, but I just wanted to get you thinking about that because you said that, that might be time sensitive as far as that twenty percent off kind of thing. Um, and for the next meeting, because I'm gonna bring it up again. Um.
How many, how many units is it for the hard?
Two. So the jail and dispatch would like to have a hard clock. Um, because of the way that they're set up and, um, then, then the rest would use either mobile or the web. Um, the other thing was a procurement policy, which I sent all of you kind of last minute yesterday or this morning.
Must have been this morning.
Remember Terry, you and Sue had said we need to develop a policy.
That's the first thing they asked.
It's a nine-page policy and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it.
No.
Um, but I have, um, I developed it based off something that Oxford had. Um, and I sent it to the lawyer. They had a couple of suggestions. I made those corrections and then I sent it to you. Um, so you'll want to look at that.
And you use past practice that we've used before. Cause I know some, some of these agreements we've had have been just verbal.
Mm-hmm.
And so I know.
I, I looked at that and it does, it has all the same for purchasing, things like that.
Yeah, I looked at those.
Yeah, so really, um, if you're comfortable with it, um, I'd like to have a motion to accept it. We're not gonna put it in a personnel policy. It's gonna be a county policy. It'll kind of stand on its own.
Do you want the motion now?
Situations. If you're comfortable with it. If not, we can.
All right, I move we accept the sustainability. It's got most of the things we did.
Second motion.
Well, I was gonna recommend, I feel comfortable if you would review it before approving.
So why don't we, uh.
Just to make sure. I know that Terry was questioning about, oh, a lot of the rules that we, that we currently do.
Yes.
That are included in there. So.
If you haven't read it, I would definitely.
I, I would feel better if they read it first and then we do it the next.
Withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
All right, so we'll review it when we come back at our next meeting.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
What is that called now in policy?
Procurement.
Procurement.
Yes.
Purchase policy.
Purchase policy.
Purchase policy. They, they have to use a bigger word.
That word, procurement, yeah.
Have to have to bring it up on the computer. So you sent it to me, right?
Yes, I sent it to you in an email. And you have a copy of it though.
Yeah, you have a hard copy.
You should have a hard copy of it in your folder.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I saw that. Okay.
Right there.
And that is all I had for miscellaneous, I promise.
You've got to mention procurement policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have one.
Yeah, I got it. That's it. Okay, all right. Any other miscellaneous?
Yeah.
That's it.
Oh goodness. Okay.